This is our meeting, Monday, July 10th, 23, 5 o'clock, about 5:01. Okay, we've done a roll call, we've done everything and pledged the leads, I'm on to that. I'm on a, let's approve the agenda.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion and a second. Okay, let's vote on it. Mr. Burson.
Aye.
Mr. Pope, uh, Mr. Lucas.
Aye.
Mr. Burner.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. All right, let's see, we have a guest speaker and, uh, let me see where that is. Eunice Dixon, if you could come up, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Eunice Dixon, I live at 1207 Emma Street, Waycross. And I have been given an assignment and when I'm given one, I normally try to get it done. I think I spoke with someone earlier, I mean, I have texted someone to try to get a meeting with you all because I'm on the Committee for the Georgia Initiative for Community Housing. And I don't know if you all are familiar with it because it's kind of new to me. But it's pertaining to trying to get housing for low-income type families and things. And we want to make you all aware of it. And when we are having meetings, we would definitely like to invite you to the meeting. However, they're at 8 o'clock in the morning, I know some of you may not like that idea. But if you cannot attend, I would be more than happy to come to you all's meetings to make you all aware of it so that you all can know what we're doing. And if you're interested, we can get support from you all as well because I will definitely be going to the City Commissioners and speaking on the same issues about housing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dixon.
Ms. Dixon. Yeah, first of all, appreciate you coming and, you know, enlightening us and sharing with us. Could you elaborate just a little bit more, you say it's on like low-income housing?
Well, it's, 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 and see, the thing about that, we have all these new words. We say have affordable housing, work-based housing, community housing. But under this group, we have the homelessness way. So it's gonna be an ongoing type thing, trying to make sure that we can accommodate the people of our community with reference to housing. So as far as I know, it's an ongoing type thing, that's why I said when I know things, I will come to you all and make you all aware of it, what we're trying to do.
So it's like a group right now?
Right, it's a group, it's a group of, uh, and I just recently got on this committee, so I'm relatively new. And, um, I was asked to, you know, speak with the Commissioners about this housing because it is a problem here. I used to be involved with housing and I know it is a problem, it's a problem with you having housing, people treating your properties with respect and things like that. So it ties in with all of that, kind of with homelessness, low income, work base. It's gonna be a number of things and I have not delved into all of it yet to find out all the ins and outs. But I do know that there is a need in Ware County and Waycross for housing. So I feel like I need to bring that to everyone's attention and see if you all feel the same.
Okay, and Ms. Dixon, I'm the one that been exchanging emails with and texts.
Okay, thank you.
We just haven't been able to coincide the time.
Right, so once I realized that, I said the best thing to do, if you know me, just go to everybody.
Yes, ma'am.
And whatever one person hears, they hear it all from me. So as things come up, I will be coming back to you all to make you aware of what we're trying to do and see if we can get your support.
Please go.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, thank you for coming.
Ms. Dixon, if you go to the, uh, what is it, Regional? I think they have something in that, uh, Don't Discuss.
Yes, sir. They have programs too.
Yeah, they got some programs over there at the Regional Commission. Yeah.
Okay, so like I said, I'm new, I only went to one meeting.
Right.
And I was given this assignment immediately, so.
I know they mentioned that a lot over there at that meeting. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay. We have a... Okay, we got a proclamation and, uh, for Mr. Bobby Blue Smith. And I'm, Dee, if you would, come up and do it for us. Only thing I'd like to say to Ms. Smith, my mother said that was the most hurt she had ever had was the loser child. So I understand. Thank you, go ahead, Dee.
If I could get the family of Blue to come stand up here beside me. Um, his work family, if you guys would come stand in behind the, uh, family, we'll read this proclamation.
I think we need to stand in there. Don't want to stand for this?
Stand.
Yeah, I think we can stand.
Proclamation honoring and memorializing the life of Ware County Fire Rescue firefighter Bobby Blue Smith. Whereas Ware County firefighter Bobby Blue Smith Blue went to his eternal home on Thursday, June 22nd, 2023, in Ware County, Georgia. And whereas born, Blue was born in Waycross on July 12th, 1998, the Bobby Green Smith in Crystal Blue Freedom was a 2017 graduate of Pierce County High School and made Ware and Pierce County his home for his entire life. And whereas Blue loved his family and cherished the quality time he was able to spend with them and enjoyed fishing, hunting, and riding buggies. And whereas, as a humble follower of Christ, Blue was a light in his community who loved people and uplifted each and every one he came in contact with. And whereas Blue was a dedicated firefighter for the Ware County Fire Rescue, a true team player who did his job well and never complained, making Ware County Fire Rescue and those beside him whom he served better. And whereas first responders like Blue and heroes who risked their lives to keep our families and community safe. Each of these brave men and women go to work not knowing what dangers might lie ahead, making tremendous sacrifices for the betterment of their fellow citizens and community. Whereas we mourn the loss of Blue and grieve with the loved ones he left behind. Whereas recognizing Blue is irreplaceable, we will honor him by his memory, by attempting to live our lives, by demonstrated as a great example, he said. Now therefore, by the authority vested in Mia's chairman, the Ware County Board of Commissioners, I hereby recognize and memorialize the extraordinary life and service and provided by Blue Smith to Ware County and its citizens and encourage everyone to be more like Blue. And witness whereof I have herein to set my hand this 10th day of June, 20, June, the 10th day of June 2023 and cause the seal of Ware County to be affixed. Elmer Thrift, Chairman, Ware County Board of Commission. I had the honor of hiring Blue. When, one of the stories I always remember and I'll always tell was when I hired Blue, Blue said, "I couldn't come in for an interview at 10 o'clock because I had to work for my employer a full eight-hour day." So we set it up for Blue to come in and Blue came in and his shirt looked like you had just took it out of the trash can and wrinkled it up as much as you could. And he sat down and he said, "One thing I can promise you, I will work the hardest of anybody that you've ever hired." And to this family, it is with great loss that we lost a family member with Blue. But we will always remember the legacy that he left behind.
That's not hard. Okay, we gotta move on. Okay. Thank y'all for coming. I'm sorry about the loss. Okay. Consent items, approve the meetings and minutes for June of 2023, the call meeting June 6th, the work session is June 12th, the regular meeting is June 12th, public hearing is June 29th, and the call meeting is June 29th. Uh, I hear a motion to approve these.
I move that we approve meeting minutes for June 2023, as you mentioned.
Okay.
I'll second it.
They got a motion and a second. Any discussion on it? If not, let's vote on it. Mr. Burson.
Aye.
Mr. Pope.
Uh.
Mr. Lucas.
Aye.
Mr. Burner.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay, now the agenda items, library boiler replacement. We've heard about, we know about it in the work session, we'll go back. Let's see, that's on A. We got the Christ quote, the train. If we stick with their, uh, recommendation, then we'll go with them.
Mr. Chair.
Motion.
I'm making motion, I said, the bid for train for the boiler replacement at the library for $56,213.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, I got a motion and a second. Any discussion on it? Okay, let's vote on it.
Mr. Mayor, this is gonna be paid out of Arco money, correct?
Yes, sir.
Here you go, okay. Any more discussion on it? Okay, Mr. Burson.
Aye.
Mr. Pope.
Uh.
Mr. Lucas.
Aye.
Mr. Burner.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay, resolution on B, the resolution was 2023-24, approve public defender contract for the first half of the fiscal year 2024. I hear a motion that we approve their contract.
Mr. Chairman, I got one question before we do this, if it's all right. Does this coincide with what Ms. Beverly presented us a couple of weeks ago? When she presented the budget to us?
Yes.
It coincide with, does numbers match? Okay.
Okay. I hear a motion in.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Okay, you got a motion and a second. Let's vote on it. Is there any discussion on it?
I got one thing I want to bring up, city space rental, $28,000 a year, does the other counties help?
They do.
Ware County pay for that rental?
Yes, sir.
That was what I, I'm glad you brought that up, Steve, because I was wondering about having several. That's rent, sound like pretty high, didn't it?
I do at one time, what some of the other counties kind of lingering about making payments to Ware County for their partial, I mean, their pay.
We did have problems in the past, a few years back, but now.
Not anymore?
Not anymore.
Maybe they're paying them, okay.
It was that way when I started, that with a couple, three counties were behind.
Right.
They called up since I started.
As long as everybody pays their share.
All right, any more discussion on it?
This resolution is, um, for six months?
Yes, sir. First half of fiscal year '24.
Yep.
And the six months is $17,790 a 96th.
Yes, sir. And the reason being, as far as the, while we're having to do it, I guess split into six months because their fiscal year runs different from ours. Yeah, so they have to split it, that's correct, yes, sir.
Okay. All right, it's gonna be paid for by the Arco money. That was on the, I mean, not.
The what? This amount is actually included in our general budget.
Okay. Any more discussion on it? If not, let's vote on it. Mr. Burson.
Aye.
Mr. Pope, uh, Mr. Lucas.
Aye.
Mr. Burner.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. All right. Now, this is on the C, appointment for the Ware County D F C S board. Okay, we have to get this C. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if you want, I can, um, I can, uh, name the ones that they're recommending for replacement.
Okay, we got it.
The, uh, the recommendation for the replacement of Shelley Tyre until the end of, uh, 2024, or excuse me, June of 2024, is, uh, Mary Alice Aldridge. And the replacement for Betty Lee, who does not want to be reappointed, her, uh, term ended last month, or at the end of this month, excuse me, or last month, I'll get this right in a minute, is Debbie Jones.
Okay, so.
Debbie Jones, five-year term.
Correct, yes, sir.
Okay, Ms. Aldridge will.
Will finish out the term of Shelley Tyre until, uh, June of 2024.
Does she have to come back for this reappointment?
And does she can be reconsidered for the, for another term, full term.
Okay. Okay, well, let's do, we want to do them one at a time. We want a motion for Ms. Mary Alice Aldridge to be the replacement to finish the term of Sheila Tyre. Is that what, okay.
Yes, sir.
Let's do that, I hear a motion in.
I move that we appoint Ms. Mary Alice Aldridge to be the replacement to finish the term of Shelley Tyre.
Okay.
Second.
You got a motion and a second now. Any discussion on it? No? Mr. Burson.
Aye.
Mr. Pope, uh, Mr. Lucas.
Aye.
Mr. Burner.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. All right, now, let's see, recommendations, Debbie Jones to be replacement for Betty Lee. Okay, now you're a motion that we.
I'm making motion, I said that nomination.
I'll second it.
Okay. All right, I got a motion and a second, any discussion on it? Now this will be for a full term.
Correct, five years.
Okay. Let's vote on it, Mr. Burson.
Aye.
Mr. Pope, uh, Mr. Lucas.
Aye.
Mr. Burner.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Okay. All right, now. We go for rezoning request, partial number 069F01-01, Lynn, Linnell Lane.
Mr. Chairman, I'm making motion, I said, this rezoning request.
I'll second, Mr. Chair.
Okay, you got a motion and a second. Okay. Any discussion on it? All right, let's vote on it. Mr. Burson.
Aye.
Mr. Pope.
Aye.
Mr. Lucas.
Aye.
Mr. Burner.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay. Now we got one more, road closure request for Mary Street.
I make a, I move that we honor Ms. Kathy Mixon's request in closing, abandon the platted portion of Mary Street from South Augusta Avenue to University Boulevard.
This has never been opened, okay?
It's never been opened and she owns both sides of the road.
Okay. Any discussion on it? If not, let's vote on it. Mr. Burson.
I think we got a second on that, then. We need you to second.
Did you get a second? I didn't.
I'll second. If you have one, I give it to you.
He made the motion, he.
He made the motion, I second it.
He said, okay, got a second. Thank you for, Mr.. Catching me on that. Thank you. All right, let's vote on it. Mr. Burson.
Aye.
Mr. Pope, uh, Mr. Lucas.
Aye.
Mr. Burner.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay. Got another one. Road closure request to work West Church Street.
I'm making motion, I said, this road closure on West Church Street in Wasbourn, Georgia.
Okay, I would like to add, uh, as long as we have time through the end of August, I believe is what they, they need to get the two ports out.
Okay. Yeah, we need to put that in there, they need time to get that, get the pipe out of it and open up the drainage on it.
So I think the end of August, that's almost two months, that's good enough, isn't it, Mr. Michael?
Okay.
And then I'll second his.
Anything else on it?
That's it.
Okay, we got a motion.
And a second.
And a second. Okay. All right, let's vote on it. Mr. Burson.
Aye.
Mr. Pope, uh, Mr. Lucas.
Aye.
Mr. Burner.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. All right, we got a county manager's report.
I don't have anything, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Commissioners comment?
Yes, sir, of course, you know, I got some.
Yeah.
Uh. We had this posted on the, the door on June 12th of 2023, when it was brought up about the library and the situation going on at the library. Uh, very strong feelings on both sides. It was, it never went to an argument level, which I'm glad of. But I'm just gonna read a couple, couple sentences that I put together here and had help with. "We are in the process of doing an appropriate policy regarding displays and exhibits. It could go a long way in bringing that about, which is the non-display. If you're not gonna display everything out there, don't display anything at all." Just like we talked about the flags flying in here, it's only two flags we won't blow in there because that is a Ware County building that taxpayers pay for. And yes, all taxpayers pay for that. Uh, "In today's diverse climate, the promotion of religion, politics, or even sex can be counterproductive to the concept of neutrality. It easily results in division rather than unity." And I think that's probably the most profound statement, is the division rather than unity. And as a community, we need to be unified on all levels, in my opinion. And that's what I sought after and wanted to do whenever I was put on that position there at the library. Because when you have division anywhere, the bricks are gonna crumble, they're gonna fall. It's never gonna stand firm. And, you know, I could bring a lot more things into it, but I'm not, like, personal feelings, I try to keep my personal feelings out of it. But I will end in saying this, it is my hope and it's our hope, the system board will do all it can to prevent. do all it can to prevent any unnecessary action and ensure we have a library left for the future generations to enjoy. And like I've said many, many times, and I'll say it again in here, I'm a dying breed. I have already lived longer than I'm going to live. So my job right now, the way I look at it, is to leave this place better for my children and my grandchildren and my great-grandchildren that I probably never see, but we can have an impact on their future and their life. And that's the way I look at it. I'm not going to live another fifty-two years, I'm just not. I'm not going to live being a hundred and four. So I've lived longer than I'm going to live, so I'm a dying breed, that's what I mean when I say that. So I believe it's our job as leaders, whatever our position is in the community, to leave this place better than we found it. That was the way my mom and daddy brought me up. If I drove one of the trucks or whatever cars, I always brought it back full of gas, I always brought it back clean, I always brought it back, you know, filled up. And to me, that's with everything, you know? And that's what we need as a, the diverse environment that we have here in this country. We need more unity instead of division. And the way we can have unity instead of division is come together, agree to disagree, that's what professionals do, agree to disagree, and we can still have our commonalities, but we can also have our disagreements, but we can do it on a professional level. And, uh, I think that's probably enough said there, but this proclamation, or the, not proclamation, but it was posted on the board, we had it out there, I'm sorry I didn't bring it up on the twelfth meeting of June, I apologize. And, uh, it contains some of our signatures up here. Um, I think that's probably enough, I need to stop there.
I'd just like to ask, Commissioner Lucas, and you said that was something that was posted out here?
Yes, sir, we put it on the board, because I forgot, I'd slipped my mind on June twelfth that our meeting, and then I, I taped it to the board, out to the door, and mentioned that I would be taping it to the door. Uh, but I'm just making reference to it now, because it should have been handled on the twelfth, and it just slipped my mind.
Yeah, and, you know, I, this library issue has been a very contentious issue on both sides, and, you know, I travel on the premise, you know, the scriptures say, come let us reason together, you know, and, you know, you got strong feeling, as you say, on both sides, and I was hoping and that we as a commission wouldn't be pulled into something that we really shouldn't, because they have a board over there, and, uh, I think they capable and competent enough to handle, you know, the situation over there themselves. And so that's, that's why I was wanting to, hey, try to keep from getting into something that we really didn't need to get into. And, uh, seem like it's kind of, the temperature's kind of toned down just a little bit, and, uh, like I said, we need to try to be more unified and try to be more understanding, rather than try to push our own personal agendas a lot of times.
Exactly. And that was my main goal, Commissioner, when I went over there, was to make it a total neutral place, a total, just total neutral, neutrality all the way across the board.
Right.
No agenda being pushed of any kind. Anybody feel safe at all times.
Yeah, and I think a lot of, lot of, there was a lot of embellishment.
Yes, sir, it was.
Attributed to a lot of thing that was happening over there, too, it wasn't really that way, but it was embellished a lot, you know? So hopefully, if we can kind of move on, get past that, because, you know, we were in a community, we want to try to prosper, we want to strive, we want everyone to try to get along as best they can and try to be more understanding.
Yes, sir. I agree with that.
Okay. I think it's headed in the right direction now, I think we're going to do a lot of, I think the library is going to be something we'll be proud of now, you know, for the younger generation. Okay. I'd like to say, I, uh, would like to see a perimeter road, but I don't know that we'll get to see one any time, or we, uh, it's still on my agenda to have one, and I, I'm, I'm still pushing for one, but hopefully it'll, it'll come about. And, uh, any more?
Mr. Chairman, on the Cornelius Road that you brought up, could we throw some bids out there? Is that okay to get, you know, take some bids and find out what the Cornelius is and/or the Moors are willing to put into the pot, uh, to help us get that road done? Would everybody be in agreement with that, if, if the numbers were right?
I don't know.
I'm not a part of it.
Ain't going to pay no roads.
I think, Mr. County Manager, could we still put a bid out there and see what the bids we come back with, and then get with both families and see what they're willing to bring to the table, and then look at it then?
Yeah, you can put out bids and see what the numbers come back out.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I would also like to, just let the public know, and especially Commissioner Davis, glad to see him here, that right now, unless there are any hiccups, Bailey Street Pool will be slated to be open Saturday.
Saturday.
And I think they want Commissioner Davis to take the first dip in the pool, to make sure everything is all right.
I'm going to say, but it says getting dipped.
Okay, but I think it's something good, and I tell you what, this weather we've been having, that pool would be a welcome sight, you know, I mean.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, give us another outlet for our kids, and we had a few hiccups with the pumps and all this stuff, but we moved around longer, glad to see the city manager here.
Yes, sir, Mr. Duke himself.
Yes, sir.
Yep.
Okay, but that's all I have.
Okay. Any more comment?
Go ahead.
What's our progress on Winkley Bridge?
Uh, they were off last week for the four, but I had to got a status update, I'm going to try to get that tomorrow, and I'll find out what's actually. I understand, I think, um, at the end of the month, they'll start putting down the soil cement, at the end of this month.
I actually rode out there yesterday and looked, and it's the bridge from one side to the other, besides the top cover, is pretty much almost complete. And they've got the dirt parts on both sides, pretty much complete. Uh, they do have it barricaded off, and I didn't want to touch the barricade, but I got up there as close as I could, and it's looking real good.
Yeah, they're, from what I've been told, is, uh, they're looking at no later than the end of this month to put the soil cement down and get it shaped up, get it ready to go.
It's looking good to me, so. And there's also, you know, there's two outlets coming out of there, too. You know, you could come out of there off of that front road, or either you could come out off of, uh, Bland Drive. So there's two inlets and two outlets to get out of that, once you get into the neighborhood, or either go through the neighborhood.
I think, Mr. Chair, we got our development director, I don't know if he have any burning news he want to share with the commission or not.
Come on, Mr. Jason, come on up here, talk to us. And I would like to say, while he's on the way up here to talk to us, I really appreciate Mr. Duke himself coming up here.
Jason, tell us about our new projects.
Me and Jason got to spend a week with this man over in Vadosta, and he's a very, very intelligent man. You can learn a lot from him, good fellow.
Very experienced man.
Very experienced.
Been a huge partner to the Development Authority, for sure, uh, with some, uh, opportunities that we have within city limits, uh, so we've got a lot of good things moving forward. But Chairman, to your, to your question, and Commissioner Burson, the project is moving forward. Uh, I am having multiple phone calls. Uh, this morning, I spoke to Suvi in Finland. Uh, uh, we're trying to finish up the grant process for DCA. Uh, they're working on finalizing their bond funding. Uh, that'll probably be toward the latter part of this year, uh, before that's complete. Uh, we are still, hopefully, going to be planning for the groundbreaking first quarter of twenty twenty-four, with completion still third quarter of twenty twenty-five. As, uh, Ms. Dixon was talking about, for the, uh, housing, this will help a lot, uh, because these are modular homes that will be built, not only single-family, but multiple-family homes, and they even do apartment complexes and commercial buildings as well. I've got a meeting, uh, next week in Atlanta with a particular project that is for Ware County, which I cannot disclose at this time, but, uh, there's a lot of different opportunities for the company, so they're being well-received, very excited. I've had plenty of landowners reaching out to us, ready to go ahead and work with the company. So we've got some exciting times, not just in Ware County, but for the whole region, because Pierce and Bacon are on with us now, as is Brantley, and, uh, we're working with Charlton Clinch as well.
Okay.
Mr. Development Director, as far as the, uh, Simmons building idea, have there been any interest in someone occupying that?
Yes, uh, I can say that that, uh, building has been put under contract, uh, so that transfer of property will take place after the closure, and it is an industrial use that, that has been put under contract, so we should see some things happening in that building very quickly and after the transfer is done, probably not a part of this year.
Have they already closed it down?
No, they're still in full operation, uh, through the end of the month. Actually, they're trying to work through the process. Their orders had picked back up, uh, about a month ago, so they had to ramp up a little bit. Now they're trying to slow things back down so they can get the equipment moved. I think they were originally planning to have the equipment moved by August fourth, but I think that's been prolonged a little bit. Questions? Keep up the good work.
I would just, I, I would like, you know, I love to talk, but I honestly believe, as a county manager, a city manager, and Jason, your position as the DWA Director, I think we got three of the best leaders of any county out there. I mean, I really do. With the businesses that we've got coming, and what we all three learned, and the city manager and Jason did at RDI meeting over in Vadosta, that's, I mean, that, that was unbelievable. The training was unbelievable. And I'm telling y'all, we got, we got three of the best leaders right here of any county, right here. And then we can get into other leaders, like the Tax Commissioner and his position, and, you know, the judgeship that we got, I think we have a program in this county in southeast Georgia that is top-notch all the way around. I think we got some real good, good things coming. And I thank all three of y'all, because I know y'all work twenty-four seven.
Thank you for your support.
Dead old, what Commissioner Lucas said, keep up the good work.
Thank you, Jason. Any more comment? If not, I hear a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I move.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion adjourned.